Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled board meeting of Akron Public Schools. At this time, we'll have roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mrs. Baylor. Mr. Bravo.
Present.
Mrs. Lasher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
And we welcome our Bookdole CLC student board member, DeEssence Jackson.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Baylor, recorded.
This evening, DeEssence Jackson, our new school board member, is replacing China Greer, who was a senior at Bookdole CLC last school year and graduated this past June. DeEssence is a ninth grader at Bookdole, and we welcome her as a student board member. At this time, I will now administer the oath of office, school board member, and after which she will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully serve as a student representative of the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability, advising the Board of Education on matters in the best interest of all students in the Akron Public Schools, and working collaboratively with board members and administration to improve student engagement and achieve a better overall school experience for all of our students?
I do.
Congratulations. And we'll just stand here and I'll see if you can just lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then we'll take a picture afterward.
Okay.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And yes, most importantly, if you could just step back here for just a second and tell us who you brought.
I brought my mom, Siobhan Maxwell.
At this time, we'll have any community and school reflections?
Well, I did attend the NAACP Gala, which was awesome, and the speaker was awesome. And it just seems like this history thing keeps resurrecting itself, so that's something that maybe I can be instrumental into moving that forward with the Instructional Policy Committee or something, you know, something where our students can have a deeper dive into the history of the United States and how things came about. So it was really very enlightening. I'm telling you, we have some great speakers around the world and everything that come to us, and you always think you wish more people were there to hear them, even though it was a full house. But yeah, so that stood out to me above all, and in 100 years of the NAACP being in action and how most people think it's a black organization, but it's an organization for all ethnicities because without the whites, the blacks wouldn't get the things that they have gotten up to this point, even with Martin Luther King and that movement. So we need our brothers and sisters of all colors and races to join us in everything that we do, and we need to just do a better job of coming together, working together. That's my take on it.
Any other comments? Yes.
I had the opportunity to go to the Akron Roundtable Extra last week. They had former Washington Post reporter Pete Early there. He's the author of a book called Crazy, the subtitle, A Father's Search Through America's Mental Health Madness. A very timely topic on the heels of election tomorrow and ADM's levy, renewal levy that's on the ballot. It really sort of hit home, listening to one person's struggles and how it's difficult to navigate as a parent or, you know, loved one, of a loved one through not only the mental health system, but the judicial system. He made a lot of points on how people with mental illness end up in jail more often than they end up in facilities where they really should be. So very, very interesting topic. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that real quick?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Bruce. One of the things that he did mention too was, are you a rock thrower or a rock catcher? And I thought that was really interesting. Do you, do you help to vilify those with mental illness? Are you one that stands between them and those that do? And I thought that was really impactful for me to hear, and talked a lot about how until we make mental health a public, and addiction, a public health crisis rather than looking at it as a criminal matter, things aren't going to change. And that's what we need to do. But he did point out, what a great job we do in Ohio with our judicial systems, particularly in Summit County, so that was great to hear. I will jump in too and talk about, I did get to go to Mason. They had their, their reading time, and again, I will say that if you are ever having a bad week, bad day, bad month, go read The First Graders. There's nothing better. We had Halloween stories and we got to talk, they were petrifying parodies, so we got to see, talk about what petrifying was, and they got to act out petrifying with me, which was really awesome because they got to freeze. So we had a really great time, and huge thanks to Mason for putting that out there. It is also Read to Me Day this week with United Way, so I would encourage everyone to do that as part of their bold goals, and that's just a fantastic partnership with them. Those were the real highlights. I didn't get to go to the eighth grade showcase or Dream Day, but boy, did I get great feedback from a lot of people who did get to go to those things, so I'll just give a shout out to the team for, for all their hard work with that.
That brings me to mine too. The Nepali community had their festival at North High School, and I did have an opportunity to attend that, which is always a wonderful event. I mean, those, they had with them their families this time. It wasn't just the kids, but I've gone when the, when the kids were performing. But just to see all the different culture that is brought to our city through that particular group of people is just phenomenal. I mean, the talent, even though I couldn't understand what they were saying, but you know, you can get into the mood with the beat and everything like that and kind of feel your way through, but it was, it was very enlightening to see that community in full force. I mean, that auditorium was full to capacity. People were standing outside and down the aisles and things like that. It was just, it was just really wonderful how they came out and supported one another.
Thank you.
It's always a good event, a really good event. I had a couple opportunities to go to a couple places this time. One was at Sibley, and Sheriff Dr. Reverend Walker will be talking about it a little bit too, as we went to Sibley about a month ago, and there was a teacher, Mrs. Fisher, and she, I thought this was really nice and really cool because it saved a life, that she taught fire safety in her class, and by teaching fire safety to the kids, one of her students' house caught on fire, and this young lady observed, listened, and understood everything that she was supposed to do in that, and she saved her life. And they said if she wouldn't have done that, she could have perished in the fire, but because she listened to what Mrs. Fisher taught them, the classes, she was able to save her own life. So that was really, really a big, big thing for me, a big issue. And Mrs. Fisher received an award from the Hartford Foundation, which the foundation became to Akron from Connecticut, but they did a lot, and they came. We had some, the various individuals from the city, fire department and so forth who were there, came, and they had the fire trucks come in, and it was, it was a kind of nice event for the kids. They all had little fire hats and all these little things, and so the kids had a good time. It was fun for them, but to see them as well have as much fun, but just from learning, you know, something big like that happened, so I thought that was really good. I also had a tough opportunity to go to the Gar Foundation Half Full Award where Dr. Kwame Scruggs, the founder of Alchemy Incorporated, received the award, and our own Dr. James received it last year, I believe it was. And it was a nice event. They rewarded him and his program for the work that they've done. And of course, they are in Akron Public Schools, doing a lot of work with some of our students as well, so that was a nice event. And then this last piece I wanted to speak about, it's Leadership Akron, and it kind of connects with us, but it's still Leadership Akron, but it was a correlation with schools. And again, I have to always, every time I think about the arts and say arts, I think of Mrs. Mansfield because she's always talked about it. But it was so enlightening how the arts can affect individuals' lives, and there were so many different things that we saw. We went to St. U at, we went to the Weathervein, went to Civic Theater, we were at the Ducks Club, and all that, everywhere we went, it talked about education and the arts, and you would hear extracurricular activities. I am calling it co-curricular activities because it goes hand in hand with our education, not a co, and separate, but they're going together. So it was really nice to, to be able to see how that, the arts can affect in a positive manner our students. I thought it was really, really good. And again, Mrs. Mansfield, thank you for opening my eyes to the arts a little bit more, and I'm always watching now how arts can have a positive effect on our students. And then lastly, I went to North High School last week to meet with our junior board member there, Monisha Ray, and we had a good meeting. I mean, I didn't want to take up much of her time because she was in school and doing her lunch period, but this young lady continued to want to talk, and it was loud, had a lot of good, rich discussion. We can learn a lot from our young people.
Absolutely.
As long as we listen, and so there's some things that I will bring out later. It's not to be brought out here, but the stuff that we can talk about, that she talked about with our College and Career Academy, and she's coming out and being one of the first group to come out of College and Career Academy, so I thought it was interesting to get her take on College and Career Academy. Thank you.
Yes.
I'll just add two quick things. The first, got a chance to go to the Summit ESC Celebration Dinner and just wanted to congratulate, we had a Rookie of the Year nominee, Megan Merle, our Teacher of the Year, who also was our District Teacher of the Year, Jennifer Wicks, and I think maybe the loudest cheers in the room that night were for Mr. Howard Lawson, who brought like a full table plus lots of folks from APS. So congratulations, very well deserved honor for you. And then also just wanted to mention another one of our student board members from Elit, Nathaniel Smith, who was profiled in the Beacon Journal as the Student of the Month. Really well deserved profile, and if you haven't gotten a chance to read it, it was very good. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Again, we want to just highlight about the Hartford, Hartford Insurance Company, located in Hartford, Connecticut, which has a special ring for me. I was born and raised in Hartford, Connecticut, so when they made the presentation, I was able to just share some of my growing up with the Hartford and with those little fire hats and other things that we did to emphasize that. But the key was the curriculum that the Hartford Insurance Company offers to any school district, and Mrs. Fisher took advantage of it. She incorporated that in her curriculum, and that student internalized all that. So when the fire occurred, she just put it all into action. And though she was hospitalized for some time, she wasn't burned, and she's doing very well now. And of course, as Mr. Alexander said, the teacher was given an award that they have not offered in almost 50 years, which was a gold badge that she was given for her excellent work that she did in instructing her whole class on fire safety. So that was a wonderful activity. And then to share in the 100th anniversary of NAACP, which has such an impact throughout the world, not just the United States, and we know the impact that it has to us locally, but the impact that the NAACP and its founders that started out of the Niagara Movement were made up, as Mrs. Baylor said, of African Americans, Jewish persons, other individuals from ethnic backgrounds to establish looking at justice. And that's a word that we don't like to hear a lot even today because of the lack of justice that's occurring. But that was a wonderful event, well attended, and excellent, excellent speaker.
I saw you, Reverend.
I saw you.
Okay.
All right. I think we can move on to our next.
Is our student board?
Yes, and I'm sorry, DeEssence, because I had mentioned to you, this is your time to share with us what you're doing at Bookdole.
Okay.
Thank you.
You like that? Okay. My name is DeEssence Jackson, and I'm a ninth grader at Bookdole CLC. On Saturday, October 26, Bookdole held its annual Pancake Day. Approximately 600 people from the community came out and ate pancakes with the Bookdole family. Pancake Day has a rich, has a rich history and is a 40-year tradition at Bookdole. Pancake Day is a fundraiser for Bookdole High School seniors. It helps cover the cost of senior dues and activities. The 2019 Pancake Day was sponsored by the Bookdole Alumni, the Bookdole PTA, and the Frontiers Men of Akron. Sausage, pancakes, and the orange, and orange juice was served. My mother, Siobhan Maxwell, attended Bookdole High School. She remembers Pancake Day being a big deal and always packed with people. She said the food was good and you got a lot for your money. Pancake Day has progressed, and this year it was a community fair as well. The Summit County Probate Court had an information booth. Newly published author and Bookdole graduate Ebony Williams provided information about health and wellness, and Jeremiah Woods, movie producer, was there providing information about opportunities about a movie he is filming in West Akron. Project Yujima hosted Wellness Circles, which focuses on Tai Chi. Tai Chi helps people relax and meditate. Many alumni, teachers, and coaches returned to Pancake this year for the naming of the Athletic Complex. Pancake Day is held, held on the day of Bookdole's homecoming. As a freshman, this Pancake Day was my first homecoming. At homecoming, it was all positive energy. People were laughing, smiling, and dancing. Bookdole is home to the West Side community. A lot of people love and support my school because it is filled with good people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, DeEssence. And yes, the Pancake Breakfast was very good. I did attend, and so did Mrs. Mansfield, and the food was good, and Morgan was there as well, so we appreciate that activity and your wonderful history that you share with us. At this time, we do have someone to request to address the board. The Reverend Gregory Harris Harrison will come. At this time, you do have three minutes, and you're not allowed to address anyone personally
Don't mess with anybody's computer. Good evening, Dr. Walker and the school board. Thank you for allowing me to address you. The Akron School Board's policy to address board meetings is discriminatory. The policy does nothing to foster open communication with the family of the 21,000 district students. By design, this policy protects board members and administrative staff from answering direct uncomfortable questions. Most disturbing, your policy discourages the public from speaking at public board meetings. You ask for our vote, but you don't want our voice. Creating discriminatory requirements and selling these discriminatory requirements as a legal enforceable policy is wrong. The policy is wrong. Your policy illustrates what 21st century Jim Crow looks like. It's morally wrong, and it's unconstitutional. Restrict speech is, in this manner, is in direct violation of the First Amendment, which guarantees the right of the people to petition the government for redress of grievances. These restrictions you've had are baseless and overly wrong. My request tonight is that you immediately stop trying to enforce this unlawful policy. The policy marginalizes populations, discourages people from attempting to participate in their children's education, and serves to instill a feeling of hopelessness in people believing that their voice does not matter. Mr. President, I left a message for Mr. Pendleton with a clear synopsis of what my concerns about this policy were two weeks ago. My message asked that he return my call. He did not return my call, but I did receive a letter, and the tenor and the tone of the letter was unacceptable. And in the body of the letter, I was given additional restriction that was not in the original policy that I had received from his secretary. This is my conclusion. The letter received brings me to an unpleasant reality and a steadfast conclusion. The Akron School Board does not want a transparent relationship with the community. This particular policy is a symptom of a greater problem within the Akron Public School System. You are not listening to the community on matters concerning the welfare of our students, teachers, and building administrators, nor are you listening to the needs of the community in regards to the Community Learning Centers. Accept this statement as a notice that we are ready to take immediate legal action against this overly restrictive policy if it is not immediately revoked. In addition, I'm ready to galvanize a group of citizens to actively and aggressively oppose any request for any additional funding from this community in the form of a levy. I believe we have to work together, but I believe it is with revamping some of these policies, some of them date back to 78. Some of the policies date back to 78. Thank you for your time. I look forward to a response or to working with you.
Usually in these manners, we don't respond. You will get a response from the superintendent. At this time, we have a presentation by Carla Chapman, Director of Community Relations, Equity, and Inclusion, and as she is coming forward, we're thankful to have in the attendance tonight Amy Gordon with Communities and Schools of Central Ohio, who we had an opportunity to talk with about this very issue of community engagement earlier today, as well as other members of the Robinson CLC and United Way that have come to be cheerleaders to this presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Walker. Thank you, board members, superintendent, for the opportunity to provide this update on our Family Resource Center collaboration with the United Way of Summit County. Some of you are more than familiar with this as you watched it unfold over the past six months or so, but you may not be aware of some of the most recent things that we've been working on. You have at your place the latest updated version of our family engagement in the Akron Public Schools, which outlines our values and beliefs around family engagement in our district. And then on the backside, you'll see this newly adopted section that includes the Family Resource Center component, which we are now rolling out at Robinson and soon to be Helen Arnold CLC. This partnership was made possible through the networking and collaborative work of our superintendent with the United Way of Summit County leadership to consider how our district would begin to address the supporting of non-academic resources for our families and our students. And so Superintendent James charged us with coming together to determine how we could best accomplish this work. About a year and a half, two years ago now, a team of us met at the United Way representing principals in our district, the United Way of Summit County staff, myself, Dr. Ellen McWilliams-Woods, to think about how we could build an infrastructure to support Family Resource Centers in our district. One of the things we wanted to be sure, we emphasized today in conversations with April Porter, who was sitting there from the United Way, and others who do this work in the community, is that we want to be sure, we stress that the idea of wraparound is about a process for connecting families to resources that meet their unique and specific needs, and that we talk about wraparound services as a category of resources that can be tapped to meet those particular needs, and then how we utilize case management as the way wraparound services are accomplished. So just wanted to ground us in this. Family Resource Center work, wraparound services, and the process of wraparound supports is rooted in research. This is one framework that I like particularly because it identifies for us the challenge that we have to build the capacity on the left side of our educators, our staff, and our schools to be ready to receive these kinds of programs while also recognizing that our families need to grow in their ability and potential to support learning at home. We believe in the relational aspect of this work in developing mutual trust with our families. We wish that all programs and activities be linked to learning. We approach it from an asset-based framework with a culturally responsive and respectful lens and a collaborative and interactive way, all with the lens towards our policy and program goals that support student achievement by way of family engagement, so that we get to the outcomes we all desire, that our kids are successful, prepared, and ready to serve and lead in our community, in our community. Let's keep them here, right? And so we have Arnold CLC and Robinson rolling out with financial empowerment centers and financial coaching, mentoring with iCare, leveraging also an additional network of community organizations and nonprofits that are already funded by the United Way of Summit County to support our youth and families. The 211 Resource Directory being leveraged and used to identify those supports. Most recently, today, in our steering committee meeting, April announced that Summit County Department of Job and Family Services will be entering our Family Resource Centers with one day per week of services to address eligibility for programs, job training, and workshops. And I wanted to reiterate that even though we have two centers operating at Helen Arnold on the west side of town, near west side, and Robinson on the east side, that these are centers that are intended to serve the communities that surround those buildings. And so I did a little demographic research and worked with our people here and found that the Helen Arnold community actually has 7,400 people within its attendance zone. That's a lot of families, some intergenerational, with elderly folks taking care of children and elderly empty nesters in that community who also need access to resources. There were about 80% free and reduced lunch recipients who we would call direct certification. Deborah Folk, want to talk about what that means when we say 80% free and reduced rate direct certification in a community?
It actually means the students.
If you would just hold for just a second, if you can have access to that mic. Thank you.
Hi. Direct certification is an outreach of the United States Department of Agriculture for its free lunch program, and the students that are 80% direct certified actually receive food stamps or are under the guise of the SNAP program. So therefore, should an application ever reappear... So therefore, should an application ever reappear within the district, those students automatically qualify because of those benefits to receive free meals.
And thank you, Deborah. And at the poverty level, that means in terms of income, that a family of four would earn before taxes $25,750. Family of four, $25,750. So what you see in the purple is the Helen Arnold community, where there's 31% of its residents, zero to 19 years of age, and then 57%, 55 years and older. So while there is need, there's also opportunity, right? Because there are a lot of people that we can not only connect to resources, but whom we can bring into our buildings to act as mentors, to support our kids in unique and different ways. So it's also an opportunity. The same kind of information I'm going to share here for Robinson, which you see outlined in yellow in the light blue section of this map. There are 21,000 residents that live in the Robinson neighborhood by attendance zone. Larger group of people with the same demographic breakdown in terms of free and reduced lunch rate, and a population of 30% between the ages of zero to 19, and whoops, smaller percentage of 55 years and older at 23% if you're able to see that number. We are actively seeking feedback from our families using the School of Excellence Survey that some of you may have seen online. It is posted right now on our website. All family liaisons are administering this online survey to families so that we can get feedback about how our school distributes information on community resources, how our school works with partnerships in the community to advance student learning, whether or not our CLCs are actively central parts of the community. Well, I thought there was another one, but there isn't. I do want to show you this survey, though, because this is pretty cool. Our tech staff. Well, maybe I can't show it to you. Here it is. So Howard Lawson's team provided this snapshot. So this survey will stay open for another week or two through the first or second week of November. And you can see that across the top here, the questions that are being asked of our families. And wherever there is an unknown, or a never, or a neutro, we see those as opportunities to address those needs in each of the schools. We can filter this information for each building. Our school listens to families' concerns, demonstrates genuine interest. We're getting really good feedback on this and intend to use it as we move forward to build this Family Resource Center network of support. And so next steps for us? Oh, I got a lot going on here. All right, let's see if I can get back to it. So next steps for us, to build the relationships with administration, staff, and families. We've established a steering committee that is interdisciplinary with our elementary office through Mary Kelly, represented. Our school counselors are represented. Lisa Johnson, our mental health liaison, is on this team, as well as our United Way Family Resource Center coordinators, and April Porter. And am I missing anybody on that team? Yeah. And so first meeting was today, and it was a working meeting with a lot of assignments. So it's good for us to come together so that we can better understand how we can share the work within a school across many different layers and people in a building. I'm excited about the Family Resource Center work. I think that we are able to do good things using this model. We're going to learn a lot from the rollout of these first two demonstration projects. The one big takeaway from a meeting with Superintendent James in Columbus with our Urban Eight folks who are also doing this kind of work is that wraparound services, family resource centers, communities, and schools aren't just an initiative for your poor and underserved communities. Anyone can benefit from the location of resources within their neighborhood school that improves access. And so that was kind of a big takeaway for me, is we often talk about wraparound services as something for your most needy populations, when in fact, it is very valuable for any of us to be able to access services in a way that is convenient, welcoming, friendly, culturally responsive, and so on. So I'm going to stop at that point and ask if there are any questions.
Are there any questions from the? Yes.
Could you just talk about the kind of communications or marketing plans to make sure the community knows these are welcoming spaces and knows all the things that are possible inside of them?
Yeah, so today, one of the things we discussed in our meeting was how we share the work in marketing this. April, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just we're actively trying to do a set of focus groups and meeting conversations in the east cluster. We're going to repeat the same as we get ready to open the whole cluster. And then just hopefully staying very connected and doing engagement events, having another event coming up soon, making sure every event we're communicating with is welcoming.
Yeah. But it will take a marketing plan to ensure that we reach all corners of the community, right? Talking about 20,000 people, understanding that this resource exists in their community. Mr. Bravo?
How are the services at the Resource Center adjusted? One attendance zone was about 7,000 folks living in that attendance zone, and one was 21,000. What do you do to adjust services to make sure, I guess, that you can reach all the families?
So I guess I would say the first thing is in that list of services that are being offered at the Resource Center, we need to be sure that we are communicating to folks and then tracking the response. Because just because that number exists in the community doesn't mean everyone is going to tap into any one particular service. But we have to put some metrics in place. We have to track and use data to inform our decisions about the need. And I would say as people begin to respond, we'll know better what we need to do more or less of.
Yes.
I saw. Mrs. Baylor? Okay. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Carla, you showed attendance zones and statistics out of the attendance zones, but for clarification, I believe you don't have to be in that zone in order to utilize the services in that school. Is that correct?
Correct. The reason why I gave the numbers for this zone was just to illustrate the number of potential families and individuals who could connect to the Resource Center, not because they have students in our school, but because they are located within our reach.
So this is a great ground floor snapshot of where we are. We know that it's going to grow. This is just the very beginning. One thing I wanted to ask is more question about the survey. So I didn't know about it, but I was able to go on our website and find it in three clicks or less. And I am not a millennial. I am, you know, a parent-ish age. But how else are we getting this out? So, right? I just heard about it, so in three clicks, I was able to go to the Akron Public School website. Are we helping people fill this out at school, especially if they're not supercomputer literate, either because they don't have one at home, or, you know, our phones are our biggest computer? They have more power than any computer I've ever owned. Are we helping them to fill them out at PTA meetings, maybe parents' nights? How else is it getting out there, I guess?
In all of those ways. So every single one of our 23 liaisons are using both the electronic version through use of our Chromebooks, paper versions where folks don't have access to that. About three weeks ago, we were stationed at Bookdole's football game against North High School with about eight of Howard's Chromebooks in the cafeteria, all set up with this survey, and was able to knock out 50 during a football game. So multiple ways right now over the next few weeks, including on the website, in the engagement center, through our PTA. The PTAs, the Akron Council are dispatching folks to buildings to help us ensure that we get good numbers, good representative-
So it doesn't matter if you actually have the technology. We're finding ways to get that information from people who may or may not have a computer at home, internet at home. So it is being collected by paper, it's being collected in person with somebody helping you. Perfect, thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Baylor?
I just want to say that I love the way that you guys are thinking outside the box, like, you know, using a football game.
If you could speak into the mic, please.
I know, it's so awkward. What? I like the way that you guys are thinking outside the box, using a football game to actually, you know, get data from the people who are in attendance. I mean, that's awesome, you know? I would have never thought to do something like that. So it's really good, the direction that you guys are going and the thought process, every opportunity, it looks like you're taking advantage of it, trying not to, you know, let one slip by. And I also always like the fact that it's that personal touch, because nothing replaces that. No type of advertising or anything, that personal touch goes the furthest distance than anything else that we could ever do as far as trying to communicate a message or anything like that.
Absolutely. Mutual trust and respect.
Any other questions or comments to Ms. Chapman? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good moral support.
Thank you. If nothing else, then at this time, we need to receive a motion to accept the regular scheduled meeting minutes for October 21st.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have our superintendent.
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21.
So moved.
Then moved.
Second.
Properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from item number 23.6.
Thank you. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes. Can I just make one comment, Reverend Walker? I forgot that I'd wanted to. There are, there's a grant in there from the Goodyear Tire and River Company, and also many donations from alumni, both from the Harris Jackson School and from the East High Alumni Association. They do countless things for our students, and I just wanted to just give a shout out to them.
Thank you. Duly noted. There was quite a few. Patrick, did you?
Just a couple of quick comments. And our Bookdole liaison, remind me.
Tim, it's Bookdole.
With, and I'm getting used still, I think, to the new system. I forgot that 23 was also included in the resolutions. The new tech, will you be reaching out and having a discussion? There's always questions around the new tech model and how it's responsible to-
Actually, we had a discussion with the superintendent today. And that's actually business affairs.
Good. But wasn't that included in the resolutions and motions?
It's 23.1 Business Affairs.
Yes.
I thought that's where we're in. Oh, well, I'm staying too early then.
Okay, so we were all confused. Disregard?
That's okay.
I will have one comment when we get to that one. One more.
Next, Business Affairs.
Yes, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs recommendations presented in category 23.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments?
Yes. And I think I might have been thrown, because you expounded on, no, that's okay. But now I was thinking the same thing, as me and Tim were both on the same page here. The Discipline Associates, item 23.4, the Discipline Associates at NS. I just wondered if someone could talk about that a little bit? And do they also incorporate, because the title of that, I'm sure the program is more positive than the title would need to suggest, does it include things centered around restorative justice and that sort of thing in line with our policies?
The mic. There you go.
No, that's okay. I think the title doesn't necessarily reflect, it's all about preventative measures with students who tend to have frequent disruptions. So it's targeting more, you're targeting intensive students, but it's all about how do you prevent, create an environment of positive relationships and support.
Thank you. That's normally a question I would ask ahead of time. I ran out of time this weekend, so appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, let's try this again, abstaining from number 23.6.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
At this time, we have superintendent's report.
Mr. President and Board Members, just one item. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting at the Federal Reserve Bank as part of my role on the Community Advisory Council. I just, you know, just wanted to bring you up to speed on the work of that council. A lot of it really has to do with the work that we're doing with Elevate Akron. So there's been a lot of research that the bank has done around, you know, equity in terms of economic opportunity. So I've been passing, feeding a lot of the reports that I get to the Elevate Akron Committee, particularly Opportunity Akron that I serve on. So a lot of that work is really, you know, going throughout the District Four of the bank, and it really has a lot to do with the same work that we're doing with the chamber. So I know I passed on a report to Sue Lacy about the benefit cliff. A lot of people don't realize that, you know, if you're getting maybe a rent subsidy or a daycare subsidy, and you get a pay raise over a certain amount, you could actually lose those benefits, and that's a problem. So, you know, a lot of those issues that hit people in their pocketbooks are being addressed by the bank. And, you know, our job on the Community Advisory Council, or one of them, is to actually share that information, you know, with the community at large, so that's what I'm doing.
Thank you. All right. By way of president's report, you all should have received an invitation to the retreat. And if you haven't responded, as Mr. Miller reminds us, respond some kind of way. Yes, no? Respond so that we have duly noted who's going to be- Respond, so that we have duly noted who's going to be in attendance. It will be at a Metro Parks cabin. Thank you, Lisa Mansfield. And of course, we'll have food. If there are any items that you feel that we need to have as a part of the agenda, please relay them to Mr. Miller or myself or the superintendent. We have a lot on our plate, a lot to deal with. So let's look forward to a great time of sharing and moving forward in a positive direction so that we can impact, as we are doing already, impacting our community. Thank you. Next, Treasures Report.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board. The first item I have for tonight is a recap of the Five-Year Forecast as it relates to future revenue needs, as we've been talking about in Finance Committee at the Board as a whole. In future reports, with each board meeting, I'll be bringing various timelines and options for the Board, as well as that fiscal deficit that we're looking at for future years, and just keeping that in terms of a dashboard in front of the Board. So it'd be a good time to model, sample what operating levees will look like. I will explore for you in the community, income tax options, permanent improvement options, and current expense, which is general operating, and detail those for you. And then, as that discussion takes shape over the next few months into next year, hopefully, we make that decision collectively and at the right time. The second item is in relation to House Bill 305, the Fair School Funding Plan. The Fair School Funding Plan has been heard in the House Finance Committee four separate times. I've testified twice, and I'll be testifying again Thursday this week. And that will be all on base costs. So the foundation of House Bill 305 and base cost will come to a conclusion on Thursday. Just to recap, the House Finance Committee is approximately one-third of the House of Representatives, at thirty-plus members. And they have been... I commend the House of Representatives for taking this up. The first testimony, I was there, I was there for over two hours. And so they're taking this very seriously, and we're detailing line by line of the formula. I anticipate that the testimony for Thursday will be in as much detail, if not more. So I commend and appreciate the House Finance Committee for taking this up. I anticipate that the House Finance Committee will continue deliberations on House Bill 305 for the next few months, and then I'm hopeful that they can approve that and move it on. So I think now, if any, the Board has contacts with senators. Now would be the time to engage the Senate. So we have a little bit... Little bit of runway to reach them before the Senate starts taking this up on the same. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any comment?
Is there... Do you have... Do we have a shared set of talking points or information that you want us discussing from if we're going to reach out?
I'll send those to you tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, our committee reports legal contracts and Board Policy Committee?
None.
Our next meeting is... Oh, no, our next meeting is December seventeenth, but I think, given some of the conversations, especially the address to the Board tonight, we may want to have one before then.
Finance, Capital Management Committee?
No, I think our meeting is December fourth.
Instructional Policy and Student Achievement?
Number four.
Unfinished Business? New Business?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to refer items number thirty-point-one and thirty-point-two to committee for our legal contract and Board Policy Committee to finish their work and research on our policy on naming facilities in Akron Public Schools.
Second. Motion has been made and is properly seconded. Any questions or comments at this time? Or policy? You understand what the motion, what you're asking?
The motion is to postpone it until we get further into the policy. I guess that's what we're saying, correct?
Correct. Until we get back a report from you after you vet what is before you on those naming.
Yeah, so our... We will probably, Mr. Pendleton, need to meet this one. I know we weren't going to meet, but I think we will have to meet.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just to clarify, is that a vetting process for the committee, or is that also a recommendation of what our policy should be as a district going forward?
If you can...
I was just going to say, I think it's more of finishing your work that you've been doing and coming back with a policy, and then applying that policy to these resolutions.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We have at this time a motion that's been properly seconded. Roll call.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. At this time, we do need to go into...
We have one more.
We have one more, I'm sorry. One more resolution.
Mr. President, there's also another resolution under New Business from a letter that's in your packet on the request of place bronze Ohio Historical Marker at VORIS CLC in honor of Major Alvin C. VORIS, for which the CLC is named.
Yes, thank you very much. So moved. It's been moved.
Second.
Properly seconded. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Would this come under what we've also discussed for the last resolutions, or is this something different?
No, because the building's already named for VORIS. It's a historical marker, similar to what is in front of Firestone, I believe, and several other APS facilities.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
If there's going to be a ceremony, can we know when that's going to be? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And we did want to make sure, anytime we're putting up any kind of monument, statue, or something that's there, that there aren't any other underlying problems or concerns. VORIS was a union general officer, so we don't run into any other problems that we've seen throughout the country when there are statues or something erected for someone. So at this time, then, roll call.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Pursuant, one-two-one point twenty-two G one, for the purpose of considering discipline of a public employee or official of the school district, we need to receive a motion to go into executive session. And I think we just have G one. Is that correct?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
We will go to our proper place for our executive session.